I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's 6:00 PM. Say good evening to all those in the audience. Thank you very much for coming. We are the Eugene Planning Commission, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing on the Brenneline Investments Land Use Applications, which include a Metro Plan Amendment, a Refinement Plan Amendments, zone change, and a code amendment. This is city file numbers MA-15-3, RA-15-2, Z-15-7, CA-16-1. To start, I'd like each of the commissioners to introduce themselves, and then I will make some additional statements about the procedures we need to follow for tonight's hearing.
I'm Kristin Taylor.
I'm Stephen Baker.
I'm Jeff Mills.
I'm Bill Randall.
I'm Ryan Colallo.
John Borowski.
I would like to take a moment to explain who the commission is and our role. Wow, we are unpaid volunteers. I had to say that. Appointed to four-year terms by the Eugene City Council. This commission often makes recommendations to the city council on quasi-judicial and legislative matters, such as plan amendments and adoption of new land use regulations. Tonight, we will be holding a public hearing on a package of land use applications. The Planning Commission will not make the final decision on this matter at the local level. That is the role of the city council when considering amendments to the local comprehensive plan, locally referred to as the Metro Plan. We act as an advisory body and will make a recommendation to the city council. If time permits this evening, we may, or may not, consider the public testimony, deliberate, and reach a conclusion, but I cannot guarantee that. If necessary, we will reconvene later in a week or two, depending to deliberate, and reach an agreement upon recommendation for the city council. Some of the terms we use are legalistic, so I will try to explain the requirements in plain English the best I can. The recommendations of the Planning Commission on these applications is quasi-judicial. In a nutshell, that means we have a certain order of speakers that we need to follow, and there are certain rules or criteria that our decision must be based upon. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to receive evidence and testimony on the application before us. Your testimony should be directed toward the proposed applications and the approval criteria that the speakers believe apply. This is the time to place all relevant issues into the public record. Those wishing to speak during this public hearing should submit a completed request to speak form to staff. Some of you have already done that. If you wish to speak and have not already done so, please submit that form now. There's a stack on the counter on the wall to the left as you entered. Once the public hearing is open, speakers will be called in the following order: the applicant, and those in support of the application; those with a neutral position, and those opposed to the application. Commissioners may ask questions at each of each person's testimonies. At the end of the testimony, staff will have a chance to respond, and commissioners will also have the opportunity to ask questions of staff. That will ensure the applicant has the opportunity to address these comments as part of their final rebuttal. To be clear, under state law, the applicant has the burden of proof. That means that it is applicant's job to demonstrate that they satisfy each and every approval criterion. Because of this, they always get the last chance to provide a final rebuttal, or have the last word. I want to remind everyone that the failure to raise an issue with sufficient specificity to allow the Planning Commission and parties to respond will preclude further appeal on that issue. In other words, now is your opportunity to raise issues as clearly as you can, so that the city and other parties involved in this case can address them. Lastly, before we begin, the Eugene Code requires the Planning Commission disclose any conflicts of interest, ex-party contacts, biases, or abstentions. In a quasi-judicial procedure like this one, the parties are entitled to an impartial or neutral decision-maker. To ensure this fair consideration, the rules attempt to limit ex-party contacts or communications between a party and decision-maker outside the public hearing process. Each Planning Commission must disclose and describe the substance of any communications they have had about the case outside the public process and any potential conflicts of interest. That is whether the decision they are about to make could or would result in a personal financial gain to themselves, their business, or a member of their household. A commissioner cannot participate if he or she is biased. That is for whatever reason he or she is incapable of rendering an objective decision in this case at this time. Do any commissioners have anything to disclose? Commissioner Borowski.
Yes, my name is John Borowski. I do have a personal relationship, friendship, with an adjacent landowner. I don't believe that this will interfere with me being able to have an impartial hearing or weighing in impartially. I just wanted to let it be known that I have a friend who owns a piece of property that is adjacent to this.
Any other commissioners? Does anyone in the audience or a member of the commissioners wish to challenge the impartiality of any of the Planning Commissioners? Seeing none, now staff will provide a brief introduction before we begin testimony.
All right. Thank you very much. Good evening, Commission. I'll just run through briefly some of the high-level things in the staff report. As you heard from the chair, we're looking at four different land use applications this evening: a Metro Plan diagram amendment, a refinement plan amendment to the land use designation there, as well as a policy text amendment, a zone change, and then a code amendment to the Eugene Land Use Code corresponding to that text amendment. So the site itself is in the River Road neighborhood or community, located generally at the intersection of North Park and Maxwell Road. And to the west is Maxwell Connector. The northern section of the property actually extends out to Maxwell Road. If you look at page six of your agenda packet, there's a vicinity map there. The site's currently commercial, designated commercial in the Metro Plan, as well as in the River Roads Urban Facilities Plan. The proposal this evening would amend the southern portion of these two tax lots to be medium-density residential with R2 zoning. Also note, there's overlay zones at play out here. Both of those are unaffected. The site review overlay would remain applicable to the commercial portion of the overall site, and that portion currently includes the general office that we're looking at this evening, as well as a C1 portion in that northern appendage. Due to the existence of our Goal V National Resources, there's also a Water Resources Conservation overlay that would remain in effect for this southern property, and none of those, neither of those are a subject of this this evening. A couple items on the staff review. There are findings from the applicant embedded in their written report. The official findings that we prepared are also included as Attachment C in your materials this evening. Based on those findings, we are recommending approval to you, but there are some caveats that Ann Davies will touch on, their city attorney, will touch on in just a moment. The transportation planning rule analysis has been undertaken by the applicant. The scope of work there is consistent with the practices laid out by our Public Works Department, so I just want to speak to our colleagues' review there, that they concur with the methodology and the results. Also relevant, North Park Avenue, Maxwell Road, and Maxwell Connector are all county roads, so as part of this review, we did refer this application to our colleagues at the county Public Works, Lane County Public Works, and they expressed no concerns at this time either. The findings from the applicant and those within Attachment C, and this is where Ann will get involved, speak to the commercial land study from 1992. Based on that analysis, as well as the subsequent Metro Plan amendments that we've tracked internally, there does appear to be adequate consistency, or adequate capacity, excuse me, based on that original surplus from the commercial land study and the subsequent amendments. However, as you're aware, there was a letter received from our DLCD rep for the Southern Relament Valley, who raised some questions about that, and I'll turn over the mic to Ann Davies, our city attorney, to speak about that.
So we received a letter from Ed Moore at DLCD, kind of questioning the findings with regard to statewide planning Goal Nine. So I just want to kind of outline for you what that letter means. So statewide planning Goal Nine is the one that requires the city to provide an adequate supply of sites of suitable sizes, types, location, and service levels for commercial industrial uses. It's kind of like Goal Ten does for residential lands, it does for commercial industrial lands. So it requires the city to prepare an economic opportunities analysis. It's similar to the Goal Ten requirement for a buildable land study. Provides data on the supply of commercial industrial lands that are within the city, and then projects out the demand for those types of uses, commercial industrial uses for lands. And the idea is that you're going to make sure that you have a 20-year supply of commercial industrial lands to serve the uses that you're projecting are going to be required for that. What DLCD has asserted in its letter is that our commercial land study, which is our economic opportunities analysis that we use when we're determining compliance with Goal Nine and whether we have enough commercial lands, is too old to use in this case, so that we can't do Goal Nine findings. We're losing, I think, 7.19 commercial acres of land, and what DLCD is saying, you know, the study that you're using is a 1992 study, and the planning period ended in 2010, is what DLCD's email suggests. So the attorney's office hasn't had opportunity, enough time really, to review that letter and determine what the real answer is. There's cases kind of going both ways, so we need a little bit more time to figure out how to advise you legally on that issue. So basically, just putting a little bit of hold on your determination before I can get you a memo of some sort, or come back to you when you deliberate to give you advice on that issue.
So specifically, in regards to the time and the AIS that you have before you, we had recommended deliberations next Monday on the 18th, and we're just amending that, changing that recommendation to be April 25th, so the following Monday, to provide that time for the city attorney's office.
So does that mean that meeting is canceled and it had been moved to the following week?
That's correct, yes, for the deliberations.
Anything further?
No, that's all.
I apologize, I forgot to say that my name's John Jaworski, and I'm the current chair. Went around earlier. Okay, I will now open the public hearing with testimony from the applicant, followed by those in support of the application. When you speak, and I assume that there's a spot up there at the front, please give your name and address when you speak.
So I have the first persons for, is also the applicant's representative, so Carl Mueller, did you want to speak now? Okay, great. Just state your name and address.
Absolutely. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carl Mueller. My address is 370 Q Street in Springfield, Oregon. I've actually worked in land use here in the area for 10 years with metro planning. You don't see me here necessarily very often. Very selective in these types of projects that we bring. Typically, we think they have to be, you know, approvable from a criteria standpoint. They have to make sense, just kind of from a common sense standpoint. In addition to that, in this one, I think it actually does serve the best interests of the community. Kind of at first glance, it looks fairly complicated, given that there's the four But essentially, you know, we have an 8.7-acre parcel that's planned and zoned for commercial use. We'd like to retain that northerly 1.5 acres for neighborhood commercial use. We would like to change the planning designations for the balance of the property to allow for medium-density residential development, consistent with, actually, the property that's also owned by our client directly adjacent to the south, that's plotted and developed. So ultimately, our plan would be to develop it consistent with the existing development to the south, or actually, that will be constructed soon. I really would prefer not to kind of belabor the point and go pedantically through each of the approval criteria. In that sense, I would prefer to rely on the written statement. I would want to note that the staff very thoroughly vetted the application and concluded that the criteria had been met, and the DLCD, as you know, as was mentioned, reviewed the application. Perhaps I didn't quite have the same understanding of that letter, because I viewed that, they said that the application in that manner, not that we couldn't use it, but that it could be vulnerable to appeal. I don't believe that they made actually any legal conclusions in that letter. Actually, they said it could be vulnerable to appeal. Of course, it may not be. Of course, the city attorney will be looking into that issue. I would note that in that letter, they mentioned that the change appears inconsequential to the overall supply. So at least from a policy standpoint or a supply standpoint, they viewed it as inconsequential. So really, kind of, the bigger question before this body tonight is, what's a better use of this property? Should we retain it for commerce, as it's currently designated for commercial development, or maybe think that it may be time to take a different approach? And in that regard, I would want to note, would like to note that this property has been planned and zoned for commercial development for at least 32 years. It's been vacant for 32 years. River Roads' supply, that area's supply of commercial land has essentially entirely been absorbed. In addition to that, with the exception of this property, which I think tells you something about the decision to put, you know, approximately 15 acres of neighborhood commercial in that area, and the entire housing supply of vacant land has also been absorbed. So here is the question of, you know, what's going to be a greater benefit to the community with this site? We would come down on the side of using it for housing. I would point out also that residents in the area also come down on that side, and that's what they would prefer as well. That's not anecdotal. I state that because of, you know, we held the neighborhood meetings, heard their concerns, and provided evidence that they supported the application, as it's written. Certainly, there's no question that housing supply and housing affordability and finding good, flat vacant sites for housing, this is an issue that's been dogging this community since the absolute first iteration of the Metro Plan. I mean, you see the problem called out in 1984, and we continue to talk about the issue in 2016. I would also note, you know, at this time, the supply of housing on the market is at a 10-year low. Development, as we would propose, you know, at least 70 people could be housed on the property in single-family housing. That is going to be, with these lot sizes, in line with the median home prices in Eugene. Now, I don't want to be overly dramatic, but I think that is a benefit to the community, to be able to provide housing around the median costs. Using the site for housing would also fit in well with the existing neighborhood character. It would reduce traffic, as opposed to what could happen if it were developed, theoretically, at some point, if it were somehow desirable in the future to be commercially developed, that would result in greater traffic. Area residents also expressed a concern about that as well. You know, there were some concerns mentioned, not necessarily mine, that, you know, there's schools there, they would prefer to have less traffic on those streets by the elementary and middle school. We would say that really, right now, the status quo has been a benefit to nobody there. It's not even necessarily wanted, by at least the residents who showed up to the neighborhood meeting, who stated that they would prefer single-family housing on the site over commercial development. As noted, it's been planned and zoned that way for 30 years, and it hasn't happened there. As such, there's clearly no demand or interest in commercial development of this site. I would think that absent this proposal, this site would remain indefinite, remain vacant for an indefinite period of time. I would not anticipate that time to be short, given the history of the site. So as we could leave this site vacant, we could, you know, at this time, house residents that are currently finding their costs, that are exceeding their gains in income, and we could house some of those people here. So our position is that this application really does ensure that land use supply is being kept in proper correlation to land use needs. I think all the evidence suggests that. As noted, we're not trying to entirely eliminate commercial development in the area. We're reducing the amount that we would have, 1.5 acres. We're still contiguous to the restaurant equipment site, five acres. There's still a very substantial amount of neighborhood commercial across the street, the neighborhood market there, attorney's office, barber shops, I mean, these areas already being served. I mean, the scope of this site, the area, 15 acres, is fairly in excess of really anything you see anywhere else in the city with neighborhood commercial development. 15 acres is a massive, would be a massive neighborhood commercial development. And when I say that, of course, I mean the whole area of this site, of course, only eight And again, we would note that our proposal is consistent with what the residents in the area would prefer, and we sought to work cooperatively with them during this process. For example, this 1.5 acres of neighborhood commercial, initially, we would have preferred to change that to community commercial, just because it would make it more, in our view, more likely to develop, create greater value. The neighbors expressed concern over maybe some of the height of the development, that could be allowed, some of the scope of the development, that could be allowed, and through our meetings with them, we decided to go ahead and withdraw that portion of the application and retain it as neighborhood commercial. I think the bottom line with this application is it's just offering a choice between slightly reducing what's a demonstrated surplus of commercial land, but still maintaining a surplus and helping me to demonstrate an important need for housing, or just kind of maintaining the status quo where really no one is being benefited. The proposals, it's a much better use of the site than the current planning designation. In our view, it should be approved. That would conclude at least my, the prepared portion of my testimony. I'd be happy, of course, to try to clarify any questions that you have, or answer any concerns that you may have as well. Thanks.
Any commissioners have any questions over the applicant? Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, and let me put my notes here just for a moment. In your application, under the summary arguments for your proposal, one of the arguments was the fact that you said access to the commercial section along Maxwell was limited because of, basically, access management, I think is what it comes down to. There's no curb cuts onto it, so it would be difficult to access it from there. Yet, in the findings, you're saying you want to keep that as neighborhood commercial. Would you propose accessing that off of Park and through a neighborhood development?
I mean, if we had to, I mean, because we control, you know, that portion, the overall portion, so if we had to, but the other alternative, of course, would be to pursue a shared access agreement with Valley Restaurant Equipment, and I believe that would be the tact that would be more appropriate.
And so that, to me, that was just a little bit confusing, because on one side, you were arguing you can't get access to the area without a shared access thing, but yet you're keeping part of it available for commercial. So it's like, use this piece of ammunition to make it a positive, but don't use it because it's a negative. So I was a little bit confused about that.
I apologize for that. I think it limits the utility of the site, certainly, and, you know, creates an issue for a broader and larger development as well.
So you don't think that you can get access off of Maxwell, get to that 1.5 acre?
I think it violates the spacing standards, is my understanding.
Okay.
But with a shared access agreement, then.
Okay. The next question I have is, you mentioned the platted development to the south, and that that is the, kind of, what you're looking at as a template, perhaps, for the development that would go forward. Can you tell me what the density of that type of development is? Is it meeting MDR densities, or is it meeting R1 densities?
It meets MDR densities. It's single-family housing that meets MDR density standards, is what we did there.
This is a question from staff. What is the density requirement for MDR?
10 to 28. 10 to 28. So 10 is the minimum, 28.
10 minimum, 28 maximum. Okay. Okay, so that was a couple of my questions I had at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Just, yeah, it's more out of curiosity than, so there's access limitations all along your, the property on Maxwell?
That is my understanding, that it's in violation of the spacing standards if we were to try to put a curb cut in there.
In any of the property, any of that length there, so you would probably develop the property with access off of North Park for the new residential as well, then?
Yes.
Okay.
All access. Yes.
Any other questions?
Do we want to hear from?
Thank you very much, then. Is there another?
No, there are no for, but I want to make sure.
So are there any other members of the applicant team that have anything to add?
Okay, then, we would take a look at, we would have those who are in support of the application. Are there any?
Just Carl submitted his.
Okay. Any of those with a neutral position? We'll then move to those that are opposed.
So I have one that has submitted a green form, Holly Hartman. So if you can just state your name and address, and you can, of course, yeah, go ahead and give it, you can take it, Alyssa.
And I want to start off and thank Zach Galway and Matt Denver for helping me know what documents to look at and to kind of understand the process. So my name is Holly Hartman. I live at 235 Bushnell Lane in the River Road area, right off of Maxwell. And I am requesting denial of the proposed actions. I have seven points. I'll try not to belabor them, but I should go through them quickly. Three of the points say that the application does not meet the statewide planning goals. The first one on the list is Goal 10, and then Goal 11, and then Goal Nine. And then it doesn't, the application doesn't meet the Metro Plan policy. It's inconsistent with Metro Plan policy, A13, A17, and A20, as stated within the application. I'm not a planner. I'm not a person who knows how to do these things. I responded to the application itself, rather than the whole of all of Eugene policies for planning, so.
Holly, can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Have you just submitted what you're going to say in a written format?
Yes.
So we can know to not take as detailed a note?
Yes. Yes, each of the points, yeah. So with regard to statewide Goal 10, the information in the application is incomplete, and it kind of misrepresents the situation, similar to the letter that you received from the state with regard to Goal Nine, in that the application is using old information, that is, information from 1997. There's no reference to the land supply and capacity update of 2012, none at all, except with regard to commercial land, where they reference the Envision Eugene process of saying that they would, we have too much commercial land, but they don't address any of the information relative to the housing supply. And I should note, at least in my reading of the Envision Eugene documents, there was a finding that there is a surplus of residential housing capacity that does not require expansion of the urban growth boundary. So it's not like there is a shortage, right? So it's not like there is a shortage, right? And that requires development of this piece now. The second point is, is it does not meet, it does not meet the statewide planning Goal 11. The proposal is pitched as providing relatively affordable housing, while state planning goal says they want affordable housing. Meeting median housing is not affordable housing, right? There is nothing wrong with affordable housing, multifamily housing, which is currently, as I understand it, allowable under the general office designation and under the current commercial designation. That if you look at what's allowable under there, you could have townhouses, duplexes, fourplexes, that are really nice, that would be truly affordable, and that don't prevent homeownership. They can be designed in a way that allows homeownership. And I would just note that there is similar development in the area, the Turtle Park Apartments, and the duplexes and so on, in that area, around the Turtle Park area, that are duplexes, that are really nice, that really are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, where there's green space, where, that people can walk through, that isn't just houses put on tiny lots to maximize the size of the house relative to the lot. That's, that kind of development is not in keeping with the character of our neighborhood. We're used to seeing green space in people's yards. And so it does not meet Goal 11. The third point is it doesn't meet Goal 9, in that just because this commercial site hasn't been developed, doesn't mean it's not needed for the future. That would be like saying just because a housing, a lot, a housing lot, hasn't been developed for the last 30 years, that we shouldn't use it for housing. You wouldn't want to say that about your housing stock, right? So just because it hasn't been developed yet, doesn't mean that it's not valuable for commercial development in the future. And again, the designation of commercial land doesn't mean that you couldn't have multifamily housing that keeps the character of the neighborhood and provides affordable housing. The three points that deal with Metro Plan, it's inconsistent with Metro Plan policy A13, because it reduces the opportunities for mixed-use development. The change in designation gets rid of that general office designation. And that's reducing one of the designations. It's, that you could have housing stock put on that, that property, even with the general office designation. That, that office designation actually is part of a transition from commercial to residential that is also part of the Metro Plan. And then with policies A17 and A20, again, the application misstates the situation with regard to housing stock. And then, I've already mentioned, both of those points deal with the state goal and policies A17 and A20, they're all consistent, so the comments are the same about you can have affordable housing, quality housing that's in keeping with the character of the neighborhood under the current designation. And then, the application is inconsistent with the part of, within the Metro Plan focusing on the use of transitional zoning, or transitional zoning to buffer commercial and a residential development. And that's what that general office designation is about, is that it isn't just commercial. It's a type of commercial, but it's a lower, kind of more in keeping with the character of a neighborhood. And by changing this zoning, you're getting rid of that buffering. You're using housing to provide that buffer, so. Then the last one is, has to do with the refinement plan. And in talking with Zach and Matt, I guess this is under the Santa Clara River Road refinement plan, and looking at the application, they talk about, in the application, under Section D, their contentions there are that there have been substantial changes in the circumstances at the time the refinement plan was adopted. And that's the only condition under which this refinement plan can be changed, according to Eugene Code, is that there's a whole list of things in the application, and the only one that they possibly meet for changing the refinement plan is that last one about there have been changes in circumstances in a substantial manner, not anticipated at the time that the refinement plan was put into place. And my contention, that's just a, that's just a contention. We, just because a commercial property hasn't been developed already, doesn't mean that it doesn't have value still as commercial property. And I think this letter from the state kind of reflects that. So, that's my seven points. I just, I'm requesting that the proposal be denied, and that any further review should explicitly address the most recent housing and commercial land inventories that have been undertaken as part of the Envision Eugene process, as well as the principles and policies developed under that process. The applicant is free to develop under the general office and commercial designations right now to provide housing, and in fact, that would provide more affordable housing, or they're able to sell the parcel to others that have a greater capacity or community vision for that land. The current designations can, can provide increased housing stock, increased metropolitan and subregion diversity of housing stock, it can provide increasing affordability of housing stock, and do all of that while it's maintaining the character of the neighborhood and the transition between residential and commercial, commercial land. There is no need to change all of the things that they're requesting. So, that's my pitch.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions of Ms. Hartman? Hearing that. Thank you very much, Ms. Hartman.
Yeah, there are no others.
All right. As I have it, we do not have any others to speak at this time. Does staff any, have any comments or response at this time? None? Okay. Do any commissioners have any questions of staff? Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, I would love, I'd be, I'd be interested to see that, that document that was presented to us, and to have to go through that. One of the questions that that brought up to me was, when she, she mentioned the fact of that GO is a, is a transitioning zone between commercial and residential. I'm wondering if, if this were to be changed to R2, what effect would that have on the existing commercial lot that is on the corner of Maxwell and North Park? Would that, would there be limitations on what to be built on that, considering it was zoned, you know, there was a transition? I, I'm not sure how that works, as far as what is required in transitioning from, I mean, literally before, you could probably put a 100-foot building there. Would that not be allowed next to a MDR zone land?
It's not that it wouldn't be allowed, it's just that there'd be different development standards at play adjacent to a residential structure than commercial to commercial. What those are specifically, I couldn't answer off the top of my head, but there would, and those would only be invoked at the time of, you know, of full redevelopment of the site. There's.
Okay. So I guess in, in the develop, excuse me, deliberation phases, it would be, it would be nice for me to know what impacts that would have on, on the other properties that are adjacent to this. If we're, if we're approving a zone change that's going to have, that's going to have impacts on another piece of property, positively or negatively, it would be nice to know what those impacts would be.
Are there any other commissioners that might have questions? Commissioner Nicoletto, followed by Commissioner Taylor, and then Commissioner Baker.
So my questions are actually related to the public comment from DLCD, and I hope that they could be answered in the memo that the city attorney's office will be generating. So my first question, and I have four, if everyone will bear with me. So my first question is actually the usage of the word "recent" in Organ Administrative Rule, Chapter 660, Section 009, 001, 04A, and the relationship of this to the planning horizon for the CLA. And I do have this written down, so I will send that afterwards. My second question is, if we applied an unadopted criterion as grounds to deny or delay the application, such as that as an updated comprehensive lands assessment must be available, would that mean that we are limiting our review to outside the adopted approval criteria? My second question is, if, and this was based on Lake versus City of Tangent, when a local government lacks a usable inventory, can the applicant provide that information and amend the comprehensive plan concurrently, especially if there is no basis for, exists for public need because of the expired planning horizon? And then finally, based on Flubikase Benchmark Enterprises v. City of Staten, would denying this application on the basis of a lack of an updated commercial lands assessment constitute a de facto moratorium pursuant to the moratorium statutes in ORS 1972541B? And essentially, what I mean by that is unless the city intends to formally put a moratorium on frankly, any foreseeable land actions that concern commercial land assessments, then can we really delay an action on this individual application under the recommendations from DLCD and their public comments?
Can I make sure that you're going to get all that in writing for us?
Oh, it's in writing. Yeah, no worries.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, when there were questions of staff, I take it that that, you're not going to answer it this time?
No, I think that she, she was clear.
This is per inclusion in the memo.
Yep, okay. I have Commissioner Taylor.
So I have a question that's going to jump us ahead, but I just would love if staff can do some thinking before deliberations on the proposed amended policy for the refinement plan. So if you could just take a look at that policy, it's, I just think there is, one of my concerns, because it's very, very specific, "line constituting the limit of the depth of the commercial designation in the subarea south of Maxwell Road shall be aligned parallel 2 and 397 feet from the center line of Maxwell Road." So one of my concerns is that it's fairly static, so if the center line of Maxwell Road, for instance, changes, then that policy then needs to be amended. So is there a way we can come up with some language that is, can move more freely, like based on, you can use other policy, policy examples, like tax lots, I know this is split zoned, but I would just love for you to think about it a little bit, and see if we can maybe come up with language that, and maybe this is fine, but I just.
Could you cite the page in the AIS?
Uh, yeah. It's page, on the PC agenda, it's page 21.
Yes, we can certainly look into some way that that remains pertinent to this application and inflexible going forward.
Yeah, thank you. Can I, can I add one more?
Sure.
I just also wanted to mention, or ask staff two questions. One has to do with these maps that were included in AIS, just to clarify that these maps that actually have designations with tax lots on them, just how should we consider these? Going back to, are these just reference items that aren't specific to the Metro Plan, because it's not actually the blob map? So.
That's correct. They are reference items, as you all are well aware, the only official version of the Metro Plan is that 11 by 17 fold-out version in the Metro Plan. So these are an approximation based on that blob map. If the city council is to act on this favorably to the applicant or improve it, these designations would become partial-specific, but only for these two tax lots.
Great.
So they are simply reference for your benefit in this package.
Perfect. And my last question has to do with Holly Hartman's, one of her questions about encouraging us to use Envision Eugene information, and just wanted clarification, because my understanding at this point, we really can't.
I'm going to, that'll be addressed in the memo.
You'll address it. Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at the, the current zoning map, and I guess the concern would be, we have C2, which, what, probably has 120-foot, five-foot height limit, sorry, 120. 120, next to now relatively low or moderate-density housing. And then there's the neighborhood's C1. It would be useful to have clear tables that showed what the allowable heights and massing and lot coverage were, and also what kind of special setback requirements there would be between that and the, any adjacent residential. Because the speaker discussed the use of G1, G0, GO as a sort of a buffer area, and I'm assuming the concern is more about the buffer for the existing C2 rather than the C1. So it would be, it'd be useful to see what the impacts were of those particular current, current setbacks in height limits and lot coverage and so forth.
Do we have any other commissioners' questions? At this time, I'll now ask for the applicant to provide his final rebuttal.
Yes, it too probably would have been beneficial for me to have been able to review those seven points in writing as well, so I'm going to do as best I can. First of all, to the question of why we didn't use the Envision Eugene information is because we are not permitted to do, so we have to rely on the adopted inventory. So in that respect, our hands were, felt were very much tied. I mean, we could show need, we could show trends, we could show, you know, all sorts of things, but we had to go ahead and rely on this adopted inventory. That's why we didn't bring anything up from 2012. I mean, I could sit here and talk about the supply of MDR in West Eugene, where most of the MDR is now, and my understanding is the likelihood is that's, a lot of that's going to go to low-density residential, to accommodate low density, so some of the supply may be, may well be lost going forward in that Willow Creek area, et cetera. So, the results of that, anyway, we can't really rely on that process. It hasn't happened yet, it's not adopted yet. We would have liked to discuss it, for the same reason that the discussion of, you know, E2 land, while it's maybe persuasive or relevant, it's, it's not the adopted inventory. So, so it's included as, as discussion item and for informational purposes, but we are and require to adopt, rely on the adopted inventories. With regard to the assertion that we're in violation of the Metro Plan by providing medium-density housing, I would just, I would just object to that characterization. The Metro Plan directs the body to provide sufficient sites for all housing types and tenures. This is one of the housing types and tenures, and certainly, we're trying to do, in our view, the best we can to accommodate increased density while at the same time, the desire for most people to have single-family housing, so. With regard to the contention that we are inconsistent with neighborhood character, and that they're used to seeing green space, you know, I didn't do an analysis of the average lot size in that area. I know there are smaller lots, larger lots. What I would say is, again, we're trying to do the best we can to accommodate increased density, and also maintain natural resources on the side. If you look at the way we platted the development to the south, we essentially preserved every single tree in that area. I mean, so, we're not trying to, you know, be irresponsible developers. We recognize the value of that green space as well, and we preserved it in our development to the south. So we're not entirely eliminating green space, we're doing what we can, in fact. The discussion of the commercial land not being developed, meaning that at some point in the future, it may not be, be developed, I think, yeah, that is correct, in, perhaps in 10 years, perhaps in 30 years, perhaps in 50 years, the need might become so great that someone decides to put something there. But the fact of the matter is, you have this area that has been, everything has been absorbed, except for this lot. I think that says something. This lot was also for sale on the market, I mean, I think it was on the market for four years in its designation without selling. I mean, I think that speaks to the lack of demand. I think that credible developers, or anybody's not going to want, I don't believe that they will want to move in there, or, or do any kind of development of that scale. I think a lot of them are going to take the cautioner. I think a lot of them are going to take the cautionary tale of the rays out there to heart, and not develop a site like that, if it's not right there on River Road, at least not to that extent. I mean, it's not going to do anybody any good to have a giant vacant, commercial development there, even if it were to somehow become desirable in the future. And again, I think the fact that it hasn't developed in 30 years, while everything else has, speaks to the fact that it's not desirable now, or really in the future. Not that it couldn't happen. We do not believe that it is inconsistent with any kind of transitional zoning. We're providing a higher-density, medium-density residential zoning, which actually is transitional as between the low-density residential housing that surrounds the area, and buffers that low-density housing from the existing commercial development that will happen in the future on this 1.5 acres that is presently existing. It's also a transitional zoning district. So while other transitional zoning districts may be preferred by other parties, this is nonetheless also a transitional zoning district. And it will, in fact, achieve screening because the development will occur. Again, and this, with regard to our language regarding the center line, we're really seeking to find something that was not likely to move, and, and the point is well-taken. I mean, initially, you know, there were some thoughts, we're trying to get contiguous, you know, be at the same depth as the lot that we're directly adjacent to. So we're looking for, but it would certainly be within our capacities to find a monument and draft a legal that, and approach it that way as well, you know. I think that is about it. And, yeah, I do. I think that the GO, though, I think the height, actually in GO, I think you can go pretty high as well, and I think that's similar, I think, to the C2 zone. It was just something that'd come up. So I think the max height is 120 or 130 feet, or something like that, now that it's likely. If that's incorrect, then my apologies. But, so, we'd prefer not to end on an error, but so it goes.
Do any of the commissioners have any final questions of the applicant? Hearing none. Thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone that, as you...
I do not have a question for the applicant, but I do have a question for staff.
Okay.
I know you've, I've already, you've already closed that opportunity, but...
It's only a script. We can, I'm sorry, but this...
I don't know if now would be the time, or I can mention it now or later, John.
Go ahead.
I think you're fine asking questions of staff.
Okay. This is just a request. Would it be possible to get some examples of other recent refinement plan amendments that have gone through or been considered by the city? I'd like to see some other examples, please. What kind of things, because I'm, got a few little alarm bell, everything, that's the only area here that I have an alarm bell going off on. So I'd like to see other examples where we've done this.
Since we don't do a lot of them, are there particular issues that you want to...
Well, I, I think that the, you know, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with the applicant in terms of change, conditions have changed, but it's an argument that I think has danger in it for other situations, when you start talking about the need to modify refinement plans, and because conditions have changed. And so, that's a concern I have, that I'd like to discuss further.
That's important, because, just so you know, that refinement plan amendments, if they're, a standalone application, those criteria you talk about are going to be kind of front and center. But if it's a Metro Plan amendment and a refinement plan amendment, that only amend the map designation, then that refinement plan is actually an automatic change.
No, I understand that.
And so, our family of choices to get at that question is going to be pretty limited, just so you know. There aren't a lot of text amendments that we see in refinement plans. We're going to have to go back a ways to find even...
Well, that's the kind of discussion I'd, I'd like to just carry out a little bit more, Steve, to make sure we're all clear.
Sure. I just want to make sure we're getting you the right...
That's all I'm worried about, you know. Refinement plans have, have a very high value to a lot of people, and, and so we have to be very careful about how we go about changing them. I understand the relationship between the Metro Plan and refinement plans.
I just want to make sure we get relevant ones for you.
That, yeah, I think you, just to give you a feel for what I'm looking at and what my concern is, that's, that's what I'd like to see talked about. Thank you.
Any other commissioners that might want to have a question for, Commissioner Borowski?
I guess mine is just a, is just a comment to the rest of the commissioners. For me, it would be helpful if, if you could raise some of your concerns, or thoughts, or things that you're looking at in this, in this application, so that I can also look, you know, it's a thick application, and there's a lot of things to, that I can pick out, but I, my eye may not be the same eye as you have, so that when it comes time to deliberation, if there's something that you see that, oh, I'm, I think this needs to be looked at a little bit more, if you know that tonight, and could raise it, so that I can go in when I'm looking at it as well, and not be at the deliberations time, trying to scramble to look at, find that page and look at it and be with it, that would be helpful to me in, in the deliberation process.
So are there any other commissioners that wish to raise something out? Commissioner Randall?
I can respond to Commissioner Borowski's question, as far as the things that I'll be looking at. I know, as I read through this, I think the things that jumped out at me, both in what we received in our packets, as well as in the testimony tonight, really boil down to two main issues. One is the DLCD letter, and what that means, and how that affects our decision. And then the other is just the, the difference that the setbacks in heights might have on that existing C2 property there, going from GO to R2, what that does to the C2 property. I'm not as concerned about the MDR property, because they're going into it with their eyes open on that. But, but just if that might affect the C2 property at all. So those would be the two things that I'll be looking at, probably in the most detail.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I was going to reiterate, too, the same thing, that obviously, the concern is more the C2 property, because the existing zoning has the, you know, has a C1 property which doesn't change. So whatever, I mean, but now we're changing the designation on the property to the south, so. And the other thing that I, I agree with the other points raised. I did have a little concern about sort of the ease with which we were changing the refinement plan without strong justification. I mean, normally, you assume that a refinement plan amendment is, you know, instituted by a...
A process.
A process, rather than just an application.
Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I, as indicated earlier in this particular meeting, due to the DLCD letter, legal has indicated that we're not going to be able to deliberate tonight, and that we've also changed the meeting on the 18th. And I'd like to remind everyone that because of that, we will be meeting again on April 25th to begin deliberations on these applications. We will be meeting here, in the same room, Sloton Room, at the atrium building. It will be starting at 11:30. However, no testimony can be accepted at that meeting. It'll just be deliberation on what is in the record now. With that, I will now close the public hearing.